I'm going to call the Mashpee Public Schools Committee regular meeting of April 6, 2016 to order first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, at the last meeting, we heard after the meeting that people in the very back row had trouble hearing, so if at any time you're having trouble hearing people speak, then we'll try to speak up. Raise your hand, throw something at somebody, not us, but at somebody. Try to get our attention and we'll try to make sure that you can hear what we're saying, okay? Because we do want you to be able to understand what's going on. All right. Unfortunately Frederick Hannah III is unable to attend tonight, so next item of business is an update.
Heard that.
Is an update on the Mashpee High School by Principal Mark Belistracci.
Good day, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Superintendent DeBoer. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share with you our most recent update of the events, happenings, and great things going on at Mashpee Middle High School. As you know, spring's upon us, certainly doesn't feel like that with the weather. Sports teams will tell you that as they've all been cooped up inside for the last couple of days with the snow. But really, you know, the spring is an exciting time for us. Number one, it's the testing season, we're gearing up. We just finished on March 25th our first round of grade 10 MCAS testing, which I can say with great confidence our kids put a tremendous effort into, took it very, very seriously, and I really can't wait to get those scores back. And this is a group that's really going to help us to improve again on our great results from last year. For Park, that's going to be coming up for 7th and 8th grade, begins on May 3rd and runs through May 12th. This year, unlike last, they have one Park assessment. Last year they had one in March, then another one in May, and it felt like we were testing for like five straight months. This year they added to one end-of-the-year assessment for ELA and mathematics. And the great thing is with the Chromebook initiative, we're going to be able to test 7th and 8th grade simultaneously, which is something that is going to save so much more time and keep our kids in classrooms engaged with our teachers. And again, that starts on May 3rd and runs through May 12th. May also brings up, or the spring also brings up, our Advanced Placement Testing Window, that opens up on May 2nd. We have 140 students who will be taking at least one Advanced Placement exam. They've been working diligently, going to Saturday sessions, taking mock exams, and really getting ready and prepped for that assessment. So again, we're excited to see what our schools will bring through the hard work of our staff and our kids, who have really answered the bell this year and really seem to be taking the Advanced Placement, the MCAS, and the Park just very, very seriously. And I think that that's a great kind of gauge for where the culture of our schools are going, that all these tests are taken seriously and the students really pride themselves on doing well. We were able to get up to a Level 2 rating last year in the middle school. Rhea Melby and I went to every single middle school classroom and celebrated with those kids, that their hard work and the work of the staff are able to get us to that point. And every student, and we're going to meet next week prior to the assessment, but every student was saying to me and to Ms. Melby and their teachers, "We want to be Level 1." And that drive, that desire to be great, I think is something that we can be very proud of, and again, we're excited for that opportunity come May. As you know, spring is spring sports time. We have a large number of kids again involved, almost 200 student athletes in the spring sports. Lacrosse has grown, track has grown, tennis has grown, and our kids are kind of chomping at the bit to get outside. That's an interesting scene, and Mr. DeBoer can attest to that, when you go in, you have 150 kids fighting for gym space and all that good stuff, but it's great to see the participation up in spring sports. It's been a goal of Athletic Director Taverri, and I think through bringing in high-quality coaches and offering again, great programs, and thanks to the support of the committee in our town, programs that are free of charge and without any user fees, I think that's a really nice feather in our cap as we get our season going. Hopefully, we're going to have some type of game soon. We've had a lot of postponements, but we're looking forward to our kids, you know, getting out in the fields, getting out in the courts, on the track, and representing Mashpee in a great way. So that's kind of the general gist of what's big upcoming as far as testing and things that are beginning. But I also wanted to give you a quick update on a number of the events that we've had, which I've seen almost all of you at. Starting with the dodgeball tournament, the school committee, they did show, they did represent. And I'll tell you, it was one of the better games of the whole night. I was there, I watched, I think, 30 games, and the school committee, Mr. Santos, he's quick on his feet, Mr. Myers, Mr. Chairman, strong arm, and you guys were in it to the end. And I can't say enough about how excited our kids were to have members of the committee involved in that, and it's just a great way again, to continue to build strong, positive relationships with our students. We had a great performance as always for our Music at Our Schools Night, jam-packed in the Mashpee High School Gymnasium, and really probably one of the better ones I think I've seen in my time in Mashpee. You know, our students just did a phenomenal job, and at the end, they did a great, happening on St. Patty's, they did a great rendition of Danny Boy to end the night, in which every single student involved in both band and chorus, grades 4 through 12, did it in conjunction. So it's just a great night, great to see all of our families out in support of our kids. And again, Mr. Tryanos, Ms. Keller, Ms. Hill, and all those involved have just been so successful and so helpful for allowing our kids to continue to refine and find their passion for music and singing and acting and all those good things at Mashpee High School. I'm not sure if all of you got to attend, and I saw a few of you there at our spring production of The Wizard of Oz. Packed house, I went on the first and second day, and that Friday night, I was able to bring my four-year-old daughter, and she has not stopped talking about it. The cast and crew did just a fabulous job, from the stage crew to the actors, every character was spot-on. And to have the community come out with 600 or 700 people at almost each show, that is just a great show of support, and we're greatly appreciative. I know our students were just absolutely thrilled at the end of that production weekend. They were tired, albeit, but they just did a phenomenal job, and I'm really excited for the work that they did and very proud of their efforts. Dorothy actually was able to write a letter to my daughter two days after, and just a great, just a great show of community outreach, and just really made a lot of young kids' days. And we had students from the Quash in there with the, in the Munchkin Land, and it was just very, very well done. So I was very thrilled with that, and those kids deserve a lot of credit. The cast is like 40 people long, so I didn't want to go through a whole list, but the kids are absolutely great. We then had, just the one week after, our Mashpee Middle High School Talent Show. In the past two years, we've had difficulty in running a talent show because of lack of participation in acts. And through the leadership of Patty Rowley, who's our Class of 2018 advisor, we were able again, to get about 400 or 500 people at that event, and we had 21 total acts. Myself, Mrs. Lindsay Kett, and one of our chemistry teachers, Doug Crook, were able to serve as judges. I told them I wouldn't be Simon Cowell, I was going to be the nice judge, but the kids are absolutely phenomenal. The courage that they have, the talent that they truly have, to give that opportunity to them to shine and to show it off was nothing short of amazing. And, you know, the acts were so unique and the talents so unique and different, it was really just a great testament to just how wonderfully talented our kids are, not only in the classroom, but in a number of other areas as well. Couple of other quick updates, we've had a really good month for our kids and their performances. On Saturday, April 2nd, Effie Purdy, who's our advisor for our HOSA Group, Health Occupation Students of America, she took a number of kids up to UMass Medical Center and went through a number of simulations and competitions and presentations. And I can say with great pride that Mashpee Middle High School students earned two first-place awards and a third-place award at the state level. And just likely quickly like to recognize, for the public health presentation, Grace Shin, Remy Shea, Danielle Shea, and Katie Green, who earned a first-place finish. For the health career display, we had a first-place finish by Rachel Barrows and Megan Howard. And then for a public service announcement, and this is where I want to thank MashPTV and the work of Shane Kinsman in working with our kids to create public service announcements that are beneficial for all and give those kids a great opportunity to get a message out in another way. And I want to congratulate on a third-place finish, Lindsay Barrows, Anahi Medina, and Lauren Levine. So we're very proud of them for their efforts, and the two first-place groups have qualified to compete over the summer in Nashville, Tennessee, at the National HOSA Conference, so we're hoping that they have an interest in that, and we'd love to facilitate, you know, expanding that opportunity. Other great victories for us, we had, every year, the Cape Cod Times has a Classroom Times Essay Writing Competition. Mashpee had, I think, six entrants in it this year, and we're very proud to say that our freshman, Aiden Godu, took a first-place finish. His article was in the Cape Cod Times yesterday, I don't know if you had a chance to check that out. And we also had a young 7th grader named Dolary Allen, who just blew me away. Her writing was unbelievable, she took a third-place finish in the Classroom Times competition, and she also did a beautiful performance at the talent show. So from 7th grade all the way up, our kids are really excelling and putting themselves out there and taking chances to be successful, which is great. Very quickly, just to kind of finish up on the events and happenings, on Tuesday night, we had our annual senior exhibition night, in which our students in grade 12 in both senior seminar classes and school-to-career classes have a chance to share their projects and their research with the community. It opened up with three outstanding performances and outstanding presentations by our senior students, DeShawn Diaz, Caroline Colome, and Kelly Bonnenberger, and they were able to get up in front of all of their peers in the auditorium, as well as a larger number of community members, and share their journey through their senior year and through their senior projects. It ranged from DeShawn Diaz having a mentoring program for upperclassmen and middle school students, one that we hope to continue in building upon as we move forward. We had one that raised a lot of awareness for teen and adolescent depression through Caroline Colome, and very informative and very pertinent, and something that I think that raising awareness for those types of things is vitally important to creating a solid supportive culture in our schools. And then Kelly Bonnenberger did a Dance for Akira marathon, in which she raised over $16,000 to support cancer research. So, you know, it is a great night, all of our kids, all 104 seniors were present, every one of them had a very worthwhile, meaningful project, the vast majority community-based. And I can't say enough where all of our kids are so involved in the community, and I really want to thank the town of Mashpee, its citizens, its community members for their continued support of our kids. You have 104 kids, a lot of them doing fundraising and trying to, you know, do things for a greater cause, and the community does never, never ends, it never stops in its support, and I can't be more appreciative of that. Lastly, before we get into a quick presentation by Mr. Brian Carroll, we had today our fifth annual Credit for Life Fair. And I think I've sat in on a large number of these meetings over the past couple of years, and I always hear the importance of providing students with financial literacy opportunities, opportunities to learn real-world skills that they're going to be applying in their daily lives regardless of whether they're going off to post-secondary education, into the workforce, into the military, or to a technical school or program. It was a great event, all of our seniors attended, and this year, we were able to actually extend a warm welcome to administrators from Martha's Vineyard Regional High School and to 30 students from Archbishop Williams High School up in Braintree. So it's gaining a lot of momentum, and all the feedback from the staff, from our students and from the visiting schools was extremely positive. And it's interesting, when you start talking to the kids about, "Now, how much money are you going to make in this, in this job?" And they start saying, "Well, I don't know, not much." And, you know, by the time they get all their expenses in, it's a great education for what the real world looks like. And I think that that is vitally important and has just as much value and impact as does, you know, the general classroom setting. So that was a great job, a job well done by all. I'd like to recognize and thank Cape Cod Five Bank, over 50 volunteers from the local communities, including Mashpee-Falmouth and Barnstable. And I also like to give a big shout-out to Mrs. Lindsay Kett, our Guidance Director and Director of College and Career Readiness, as she put this together with a couple of students who did it as a senior project, and really just a job well done, I can't say enough about it and how valuable I believe it to be. And I look forward to continuing annually to host that event, as it has great value to me. One other thing that I just quickly wanted to mention was our annual, our second annual Higher Education Fair. I saw a number of committee members there, as well as parents. We opened up a college fair with over 52 representatives from four-year public, four-year private, two-year public, technical schools, and military, and we were able to host all of our kids, not only in 12th, 11th grade, excuse me, but 10th grade, 9th grade, and also some 8th graders were able to attend. We believe that it's important to get this idea of a college-going culture started early. I know Mrs. O'Brien, even at the Quash, is in the process of doing that, just a great opportunity to provide our kids some time during the day to attend these events with their families. We had about 40 or 50 parents that also attended with their children, and I think it was just a great experience for them to just learn a lot about the process and to speak with representatives and to learn about these schools that they have an interest in, so that when they're going through the application process in just a short time from now, that they're prepared, that they're educated and knowledgeable of what's expected and what the colleges that they're looking for are requiring for admission. So I can't thank Lindsay Kett enough for that, as well as Olivia Driscoll, who's our Guidance Intern, who secured all 52 representatives. And just to kind of give you some backdrop on that, when we first started this, we had about 22 college representatives, and now we're up over 50. We hope to hopefully break 70 next year, as a goal, is to continue bringing these, you know, high-level institutions to our students at their fingertips and at their disposal to learn more about. All right, I promised I wouldn't go too long, Mr. Schmidt. The last thing I'd like to do is to provide you an update on the MTSS implementation at Mashpee Middle High School. I know we've talked a lot about this at prior meetings, we were able to secure the Tower Grant for not one, but now two years, and I cannot say enough for the growth that we've been able to show at the middle and high school level in our staff. Getting the chance to work with experts like George Batch, Judy Elliott, Judy Maynard, and eventually George Segai, we've been able to, as a district-level team and as a school-based team, make a lot of headway in a short time. And a lot of that is attributed to the leadership and guidance of these experts that we're working with, but I attribute even more of it to the teams that we've built in our schools. Mashpee Middle High School has a team of 14 individuals, in which have been trained in large groups as a train-the-trainer model, and we've been able to run two highly successful professional development opportunities for our entire staff at the middle and high school level in both April and back in March. And I can't be more proud of the staff for their open-mindedness, their willingness to put students first at the forefront of every decision that we make and all of our priorities. And I'd like to invite one of our highly-valued team members, outstanding English teacher in grade 8 and 9, Mr. Brian Carroll. Just going to just give you a brief update on the teacher, you know, reflection on this, that's not just coming from the principal.
Thanks, all, for having me. Thanks, Mr. B., nice to see you, and Mr. DeBoer, Mr. Chairman. So I'm on the School-Based Leadership Team, it's one of many acronyms that we're sort of dealing with, the SBLT. That's a team that Mr. B. mentioned, is 14 of us, it's department heads, and then three other staff members, one of which is myself, so I'm not a department head, I'm sort of, you know, kind of representing the whole staff on this team. And we're at a really kind of crucial and like kind of exciting time. We've now been to several, as the School-Based Leadership Team, four trainings, and we're now at the point where we're sort of starting to translate it to the staff. So we're, we get trained, and then we in turn kind of try to impart what we've learned to the rest of the staff. And as Mr. Belistracci mentioned, there's been two professional development days on the half-days that we have, and the response has really been, I think, far exceeded our expectations. It's, I mean, we had high expectations and it's been better than even than we thought. The staff is 100% behind it. We did a survey, trying to sort of pre, you know, before starting the process, to get a sense of where the staff stands on a bunch of beliefs, and almost universally, they're sort of like, have the kind of core beliefs that we're looking for about all students are able to achieve and meet standards, and that kind of get, with the right environment, they can succeed. And that's kind of like the key piece that we need in order to get the process going. So we are, we have looked at the problem-solving process and, and a kind of tool that we use to determine what sort of support students need if they're not succeeding, and those are kind of like the two basic pieces that we've covered so far. And we're, we're really excited for how things are going to go from here. That's, that's kind of, unless you want more detail, I'm happy to provide more detail, but it gets pretty nitty-gritty pretty fast.
That's outstanding. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. And I'd also like to thank Superintendent DeBoer for her support in rolling out the MTSS implementation. It's something that takes a great deal of thoughtful planning and strategic planning, and I believe that through her leadership and through the district-based leadership teams, you know, planning of this has been highly effective, to the point in which we're very, very proud, and we're very proud of our team, that we've been recognized nationally by the members of the Tower Foundation, to be keynote presenters at the next conference in the fall, which we're absolutely thrilled and flattered to be even considered for. But I think it really goes back to the leadership at the district level and also to the team members who have embraced this and who have led their colleagues in training to improve. And I just, I can't say enough about it, I'm just absolutely thrilled, and I truly believe that MTSS is going to be, not an initiative, it's what we're going to do for the foreseeable future and hopefully forever. It's a, it's a common-sense approach, problem-solving-based approach, taking the student out of it and looking first and foremost at how we can reflect on our own practices. Is our instruction top-notch? Is our curriculum perfect, or as close to it as possible? Is our learning environment optimal for all students to achieve? Those are the things that we were able to start looking at in a reflective way. I think once you can break down that barrier and have professionals reflecting on their practice, then the learner will take care of itself. So I'm absolutely thrilled with it, and I can't thank Mr. Carroll enough for leaving his three little babies at home for a little while here to come and present to you. And that's pretty much what I have for you. I know it's a lot to digest quickly, but we're really moving forward, it's an exciting time. Our seniors have less than six weeks of school left, so it's exciting for them. And really, I cannot believe how fast the school year has gone and the fact that we're going to be entering into term three, term four, excuse me, in just a couple of short days. So I appreciate the support of the committee, Superintendent, and I look forward to, again, working with our community to make Mashpee High School a great place to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Principal, you talked about the trying to achieve Level 1. You know, I've done a little bit of looking to that, how you get there, and I would assume that part of it is MCAS, and another part is participation within MCAS, you know, trying to be around 90% or 85% in that range, right? And what do you think is the most difficult, not necessarily for this district, but for any district really? Or maybe you can expand on what it does, how would you get there through this district? For example, you know, graduation rate, is that, is that something that's really going to hurt your ability to get there? Because, you know, according to our Guidance Director, we do have one of the tougher graduation requirements on the Cape. Maybe you could touch on some of that?
Well, I think having, I think having high expectations for graduation requirements is a good thing. It helps to push students to strive to be great. I think when you look at how do we get to Level 1, I think there's so many variables that play into that. First and foremost, though, to me, it's the level of instruction and student engagement in the classroom. I think that's where it all begins. Solid, high-level, tier-one core instruction is what's going to, what's going to get us to the next level. And I think that as we build upon that and continue to build a strong culture in our building that supports and celebrates academic achievement, I think that's what's going to be, you know, one of the great driver, driving factors to get us to that point. Can I promise you that it's going to be Level 1 right away? I don't want to make that promise. I will say, though, that the efforts being made by our staff and the overall mindset of the kids, that this is something they want to do, to strive to do well, is a major culture shift in our schools and something that we're very, very proud of.
Yep. And, you know, I've always thought Mashpee was wonderful because of the smaller size that we have. And what do you have, about 432 or 435, something like that?
Approximately.
I mean, you know, other schools, I think, Bourne has recently been a Level 1, Falmouth, Barnstable was recently, I don't know if, I haven't looked at this year's numbers, but it's certainly attainable because of the, you know, we don't have an overwhelming amount of students to deal with here.
Absolutely, and sometimes large numbers are good and bad, sometimes small numbers are good and bad too, because one or two kids in a class of 100 can be a couple of percentile points. But again, it is attainable, and I think through the hard work, it's not easy though. And I think that the harder we work, the more effort we put and focus on instructing kids and engaging students in classrooms, that's going to be our ticket. And that's been the focus of everything that we've done throughout the course of this year.
And then just one final, the 7th and 8th grade would not be a part of the high school leveling system, isn't that right? I mean, don't they have, they're totally different.
Yes, they're different at this point in time. Until we classify as a 7 to 12 school, then they would all count together. Currently, we're a 7 to 12 building, however, we're still two separate schools via DESC.
And is, of course, there's, you know, different arguments about whether to conjoin them, as you've already talked about with the size, you know, too many students or not enough students. So that's, that's a totally different conundrum right there.
I think it is, and I think that's something that we can definitely discuss further with the committee and superintendent, and if that's something that we wish to do, then I'd be fully supportive of it, and I'd also be supportive if you wanted to maintain our separate setting classification right now as well. I know that the Park coming up, we're excited with the scores that we had last spring, which were just, we really knocked it out of the Park, no pun intended, and a lot of that's because of Mr. Carroll and his great work with our 8th grade ELA, had almost every 8th grade student last year in English, and they had 80% growth, which is just phenomenal. But again, we can't rest on our laurels with one-year scores, every year is different, every group of students is different, every cohort's different, and we have to make sure that we focus on meeting the needs of those students as they are, not as they were the year prior.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was just going to make a couple of comments. One, I do think sustainability is always the key, you know, we got there last year, we want to get there again this year. I think it's great that the kids are wanting to strive and push to get to be a Level 1. We shouldn't stop, we should keep moving forward, sustain what we're doing, and build on it. It sounds like, you know, the great work that's taking place with MTSS, that, you know, it's another great program to help us achieve those objectives. Lastly, I just wanted to make a comment about the great support and spirit that I saw at the Talent Night at MTSS. I give 100% kudos to those kids that were up there on the stage, singing, dancing, doing all the other acts that they did. It just blew my mind, the level of talent that we have here in Mashpee. And equally, I was quite impressed by the support, not only from the parents that were there cheering for their children, but also from the other students who recognized, you know, sometimes kids are nervous, sometimes they forget a line, and I thought that was great, how they all pulled together and were supportive of every act that was up there. And I was just totally impressed by everybody on the stage and in the audience, and I think that just goes to reflect the, the overall talent that we have here in Mashpee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And just to Mr. McGee's point, when you have a small class size and you have a small school, you have that cohesion, you have that camaraderie within the classes, and the best part about our school system is that we do have great kids. And when you have great kids, if you button up everything else, you're going to be in good shape. So we're very appreciative of your support, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Superintendent DeBoer, and we're just really excited to continue to move forward in a very positive direction. Thank you very much.
All right, next item of business, public comments, have we got anything? No? Moving on, approval of meeting minutes of March 2nd. Have those in your packet?
Move to accept the minutes of March 2nd, 2016.
Second.
Second. Any comments?
I just had a procedural question, because we've, we had a third read approval in these minutes, and then the next minutes we're going to approve, we had a first read of the calendar. So should we be saying approve for both of those, or should we be saying accepted a first read? I mean, what's the procedure, the correct procedure for that? Should we say approve a first, a third read, or should we just say we approved it for the, if I'm making any sense? We approved a final read of policy IF in this one? So should we just be saying approve the procedure, or should we be saying approve the final read?
We approved the, we approved the procedure at that point.
Okay. And it becomes more apparent in the next meeting minutes, so I'll move to that one. Can be quiet.
Any other, any other comments? Nope. Okay, Scott, how do you vote?
Hi. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Approved. You also have in your packet the units in March 16th, 2016 meeting.
I moved to accept my three 16, 2016 minutes.
And so my question is here, and I, maybe I'm just misremembering the last meeting, but we said that we approved a first read of the school calendar? Did we approve the school calendar?
That's unfortunate.
Right. So, I mean, should we be using the word approve? It's very similar to the fact that we just approved the MTSS, or I'm sorry, per policy IF. I just, I think we should delineate between the two. And if we said that, and that was the motion, then so be it. I just wanted to make sure. I thought I, I'm sorry?
It was.
I am not calling you out.
No, no, I know, I just mean, that's what I.
Got it.
I can change it if you.
No, again, I will. Move on.
I think it's okay. Any other questions? Scott, how do you vote?
Hi. Yes.
Yes. I abstained.
Yes. Approved. Okay. Next item is report of the superintendent.
So, good evening, Chairman Myers and committee members. We have the principal reports in the packet. We have Principal Lithwin's Casey Coombs report. She has 446 students. Her acknowledgements, she would like to thank Meg Smith, the librarian, for organizing the week-long Dr. Seuss activities and events. Thank you to students and families for collecting items for the MSPCA. Thank you to Katie Martin, the STEM teacher at the Coombs School, for organizing STEM Night, and Coombs staff members for also participating and supporting that event. That was a very well-attended and outstanding sort of planned event. The activities for the students were really amazing. Thank you to Eileen Manganello, who is the Adjustment Counselor at the Casey Coombs School, for coordinating the school-wide, wide Ronald McDonald bump-a-nose leadership assembly. Did that involve Mrs. Lithwin in some way of doing something?
I, no, I was not gonna get up there with Ronald McDonald.
Okay, okay. Thank you to art teacher Kim Palmer for continuing her Artist in Residence Program, which is an annual event that is, involves the second graders. And thank you to Margie Mitchell, the PE teacher, for coordinating the annual Jump Rope for Heart event, which raised $5,416.97 for the American Heart Association, which is an outstanding number. On upcoming events, Mrs. Lithwin has her school council meeting on April 12th at 3:15. April 12th is also Picture Day, so everybody needs to choose their outfits appropriately, apparently, in coiff, I don't know. On April 14th is a very important event called Upstream to Kindergarten. It is an event that takes place from noon to 1:30 for all community preschoolers and incoming kindergarteners. And so invitations go out to private preschools, as well as the students in our preschool and any other non-preschool students to come for this sort of adventure. It's a stations kind of activity with centers. That's followed by a 1:30 performance of the, a school-wide performance, Steve's songs, music performance. So these guests get to participate along with current students in the Coombs School at this event. April 15th is stepping into spring, it's a school-wide walk. All families are welcome to join in if they have students at the Coombs School. April 15th is a rather important day, preschool registration ends. That means that all paperwork must be turned in by that date. And if you have any questions, please call the Coombs office to make sure that that, you can meet that deadline. And the final upcoming event would be the PTO meeting on April 27th, which, is it at 6:00 PM?
I think our part of it is at 7:00 this month. It goes back in the month between Quashnet and Coombs, who has the earlier. Coombs' is at 7:00.
I do have it at 7:00.
Well, they're both on April 27th, anywhere in the 6:00 to 8:00 range at night.
Absolutely.
Just come.
Notices will go out.
And I wanted to acknowledge the combined, the PTO-sponsored Coombs School versus Quashnet School basketball event. That was last Friday night, April 1st. And it was staff and parents who participated, and they had a female game first, followed by the male game. And I believe Mr. Santos might have participated on the Coombs team. Good job. My observation, I did not participate, I just was a witness, but it was really quite hazardous to be a, and Mrs. Lithwin could attest to that, I saw her fall or be pushed onto the floor. People landed on top of each other, so, you know, for me, it was a good decision not to join the women's team, because they were pretty aggressive. But it was a very well-attended family event, a wonderful event, bringing the two schools together, a friendly competition. I'm not sure who won or lost.
Quashnet.
Quashnet won.
First half-hand success. That is. We had the best sportsmanship.
I'm not sure which school had the most injuries, however. There were quite few. I believe Nurse Stacy had to go to the car for her bag to make sure she was prepared, she told me. Anything else you'd like to add, Principal Lithwin?
No, I thought I'd update you briefly on our, where we are as far as registrations go right now. As you know, we're actively involved in both preschool and kindergarten registrations. Between the two, we have 142 children. Eighty of those are preschool students, 62 are kindergarten. And 94 of those 142 are brand-new to the Mashpee Public School system. We still have eight days left until the preschool registrations close. And then it looks like we will be needing to do a lottery for our slots to determine who has the full-day slots and then, but we will be certain that all four-year-olds eligible for kindergarten the following year have a quality preschool program.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mrs. Lithwin, when we, when you look for, when you're trying to contact the preschool, do, what do you do? You contact Town Hall, and then Town Clerk gives you addresses, and that's how it's done? Do you send a letter?
Yes, we, we have several different ways that we contact and reach out to members of the community. We have letters that do go out based on the town census, so families, it's important to do the census. And we send letters and explain the whole process that way. We also, for a period of four weeks, advertise in the enterprise. We have a little ad that's in there every week for, up for a month. And so those two places, we typically have had it out on our billboards, but that was hit by a car, so it's no longer there. But we, and then we send home notices with families right within the school so that they get it around to the neighborhoods. We also have the CFCE coordinator that goes to each one of the preschools in the town, and she has spent some time at, over at the village, helping families register. And in fact, just the other day, she met up with somebody over at Honeydew Donuts to help with the registration process. So we are reaching out and trying to make it simple for people to get into the school.
And I just have one follow-up. Do you ever, have you ever, or how often do you have people say, wait a minute, you missed me? I didn't, you know, I'm late, I didn't have the census, I didn't, you know, wasn't paying attention, and here I am on, you know, August 1st. And what do you do then? Has that happened, or what do you do then?
Yeah, I've had some families say, I didn't know about it. And I said, we've, basically, where we've advertised, what we've tried to do, how we've tried to reach out, and yes, we, there is a family here or there that might miss it. If it's full, it's full, you know? I, we try our very best to get to everybody. We, you know, if, no, we typically, everything gets ready for. So we try our very best, and that does happen, unfortunately.
Sure, thank you.
I don't know where, how else we could reach out.
Right.
What is our capacity for the preschool, roughly? Because I know it, there's some factors.
There are some factors. If we went absolute maximum capacity, we could have 80, 90, 100, 110, 120, 125, if we went absolute maximum capacity. But we want to be very, very careful with that, because we have to leave a certain number of slots open in case we have people that move into the town, that have, students that have special needs, who have IEPs that need to be addressed, so we, and, or we have children that we don't even know that are out in the community. And we want to make certain that we've got something to help those that are the very neediest get a good start.
So what are we targeting, then? If 125 is the, the upper end, what are we, what are we targeting?
We have had in our full-day classrooms this past year, we've had 20 students. And we were very concerned with 20. It was not the ultimate of what we'd like to have. What we brought, when we brought forward, I came forward earlier this year about changing it to doing four full days instead of the three full days. The intent was to try to make those classrooms a little bit smaller between 17 and 18 students as opposed to 20 students. So that's what we're looking for with that. We're looking for 13 to 14 maximum of regular education students, and three to four depending on the needs of our, those that are special education students in those. We have to maintain certain ratios based on the state, and the, and they kind of mandate how many special education students to regular education students that you can have in the ratios there.
So to maintain that ratio that you're striving for, do we, what's our limitation? Space, teachers, money?
Part of it is space, certainly space. Coombs is to the max, and filling things. Next year, there's.
No empty rooms.
There are no empties rooms, and there's no storage. We are maxing out the space there in every way that we possibly can. And this is, Superintendent DeBoer is kind of smiling a little bit, because we've been working on this a lot, as to what, how we might be able to fit more people in there and get, you know, things like the cafeteria, trying to get people through, you get too many people, you can't, there's, we can't, if we went to that maximum number that I said that we could handle, we would have to have additional lunches. Then you're talking about lunches going until 1:30. Do you really want your four-year-old eating lunch at 1:00 in the afternoon, because we can't, we don't have the capacity to put them through? So there's a lot of factors that go into helping to determine how many we can handle safely.
I think it would be interesting next fall, if you could let the committee know, you know, between that targeted capacity and, you know, is there a gap, you know, of children that we're not able to serve, because?
Up until this point, we have, last year, anybody that applied, we were able to get them, we got them, some families choose to have their children go to a half-day program, even though a full-day program might have been available. So last year, we were able to get everybody in that wanted to be in a full-day program with the exception of one child. One child had to go to the half-day program. Partway through the year, a full-day program slot opened, and we offered it to the family, and the family decided that they, the child was already well situated, they had made other arrangements they didn't want to change. But they were, so every one of them that got the choice that they wanted.
Oh, good.
Last year.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that, you know, as we go through this, I haven't looked, scrutinized the applications that have come in, but we've been contacting families to determine, do they want a half-day? Do they want, you know, be eligible for a full day? Would you like a full day or a half-day if it's available? And some families do want the half-day. So we'll see what shakes down and hopefully be, I know we're gonna give something grace to anybody that comes to the door.
Well, once again, I think it's a good problem to have.
It is a good problem.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Principal O'Brien's report for the Quashnet School, 508 students. Under her acknowledgements, we are fortunate to have a wonderful partnership with Mashpee Police Chief Carline and the Mashpee Police Department, who increased the police presence for the primary election day. Having uniformed officers in the Quashnet School and in the parking lot helped ensure the safety of our students and staff, and Mrs. O'Brien greatly appreciates the teamwork. She would like to thank Guidance Director and College and Career Readiness Director Lindsay Kett and the Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank for their partnership in presenting a very informative and necessary session for parents on the importance of planning for college costs. It was not as well-attended as we might have liked, so we have to figure out ways to really get more parents in. It was so worthwhile, so well-presented, really clear with the options. If my children were still little, I would have made some changes. I missed the boat on some things. Music in Our Schools Month, which Principal Balistrachi also mentioned, was an outstanding concert. And Mrs. O'Brien would like to thank Mrs. Hill, Ms. Sherman, Mr. Tryanos, and Ms. Keller, and all the teachers who assist with music education. Our students were very well-prepared and performed beautifully. And then thank you to Ms. Bretton Cohane and Ms. Ally Cohane for organizing the first annual Falcon Family Skating Event. This event was very well-attended, and it was free for everyone, including the rental of skates. And Mrs. O'Brien would like to acknowledge the owners and management of the Gallo Ice Arena for their very generous donation of 90 minutes of free ice time for our Mashpee families. And this is hopeful to be an annual event. There were students of all ages there, not just Quashnet School students, so it was really a wonderful event. I thought I might try to skate, and I did get them on and hugged the wall and decided this was not a wise move, so I took them off. But I had skates on, I could say that. Didn't want to be injured. Just to point out, in upcoming events, I believe it's tomorrow night, the 7th, is the Quashnet School Talent Show at the, at 6:00 PM at the Mashpee High School Auditorium, an equally entertaining event to what was last week for the high school. Very talented, very brave students who get up and show us what they have, and they have great talent. So you should come to that event tomorrow night. Next week on Tuesday night is an Indian Ed Parent Meeting from 6:30 to 7:30 PM. That's held at the high school. On the 28th of April is the Picture Day at the Quashnet School, class and individual. And then on the 27th is that night of PTO meetings, whether at 6:00 or 7:00, you want to hit one of those. Is there anything you'd like to add, Mrs. O'Brien?
We are also in the planning stages for our annual Career Day, which is in June. So I'd just like to invite the committee members, if you are interested in sharing your chosen professions with our wonderful students, whether it be a third, fourth, fifth, or sixth-grade classroom, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. Next, we have the report of Principal Balistrachi for the Mashpee Middle High School. He pretty well covered everything. He has 706 students currently. I don't know whether he talked to, he was congratulating the Mashpee Middle High School Jazz Band on a great performance at the South Coast High School Jazz Festival. We want to again acknowledge Gabrielle Carroll. She was honored as the Superintendent's Excellence Award winner, and there was a dinner in, to honor all of the Cape Cod recipients at Cape Cod Tech. Very grateful for that, it was a lovely evening. Congratulations to Mashpee Middle High School Senior Caleb Holtz for receiving the Daughter of the American Revolution Good Citizen Scholarship. Mr. Balistrachi also wants to thank Guidance Director Lindsay Kett on the Dollars for Degree Program that we talked about under the Quashnet School report. The job well done at the Music in Our Schools Night, he talked about that. Wizard of Oz, M. Cassie talked about. Talked about the Higher Education Fair, which was wonderful. I would like to add, I have a letter here that congratulates Mashpee High School, the Board of Directors of the National Association of Home Builders, approved the application for Mashpee High School to be an affiliation school, so that they will have an NAHB student chapter. And that's quite a, a nice addition and community partnership for our students and the programs that we offer. So that's a extra little tidbit. Yes. And upcoming for the middle high school, term three ends on Friday. The, on the 11th of April is the middle school, it's the National Junior Honor Society Induction Ceremony, which is for middle school students. What time would that be?
So just a quick one, due to a conflict that just recently arose. It's gonna be rescheduled to May 12th. 6:00 PM, it's a Tuesday night at the Mashpee High School Auditorium, so I apologize if that went out.
That's okay.
The conflict being identified. So it'll be, again, May 12th.
May 12th. On April 13th is when the term-three report cards or senior warning letters are issued. Hopefully, there's no senior warning letters, but, on April 14th, the National Honor Society is hosting a blood drive. Is there anything else you'd like me to add? Okay. Mr. Balistrachi already took my, my. Mr. Balistrachi already took my, my, my chat on the classroom times. The only one that he missed, which I'll add, is a student in the Quasnet School, Haley Cogshaw, and she was recognized as second place in the grades four to six for this photograph that she submitted. And just quickly, I was reading Aiden's essay, and he wrote a review of a video game called Kingdom. I have no clue about it, but it makes me want to play it based on his, just this one paragraph for, he's really quite rich with his use of words. He had written, "You can hear the thud or the splish as your archer's arrows miss the enemy, hitting the ground or the water. The music in the game is eloquent. It can be uplifting and fill you with hope for the day ahead, or it can be more somber and give you a sense of quiet pride with all you have done, and make you feel the need to stop and look at the beautiful scenery." So you, you start with nothing and you sort of create this kingdom, and he just talks about the graphics that go along with this game, the sounds that you hear with the rustling tree in the water. So he's a very good writer, so good job for Aiden. Excellent writer. Next, we have the report of the Special Education Director, Michelle Brady, who is here this evening. We have 337 students who are currently receiving special education services. Mrs. Brady is always busy with ways of involving herself with teaching and learning, and then many out-of-district meetings that she attends, and not only for special education students, but also to build community connections. Anything particularly you want me to? Okay. We have Athletic Director Taveri's report to highlight the South Shore League All-Stars for Boys, this is for the winter. Boys Basketball, Michael Frazier and Devon Ford. Girls Basketball, Jordan Hugh. Girls Hockey, Tana O'Brien. Gymnastics, Allison Kondraki and Sydney Pinsonal. Cheerleading, Brenda Price. Boys Indoor Track, Austin Gray, Gunner Ahern and Ryan Boyd. Girls Indoor Track, Shannon McGovern, Katie Wellington, Tess Hatchey. And Mr. Balistrachi was talking about the increased numbers of participants as we enter the spring sports season. Girls Lacrosse has 30, which is the largest total to date, and Boys Lacrosse at 40 participants is the largest we've had. Baseball has 26, softball 23, Boys Tennis has nine, Girls Tennis has 10, and Track has 40. And yes, they are itching to get outside and be able to practice their sport without snow and freezing weather. And there was mention in, in Mr. Taveri's report about the Falcon Festival, which was last weekend, but had to be canceled for our lovely April weather, so that did not take place. Anything else on any of the reports? Any questions on those? All right, so then we have Personnel Report. We have the addition of a teacher at the Quasnet School, Michael Loyco, and we also have a retirement of a teacher at the Quasnet School, Stephanie Lanew. Her last day was yesterday, so. The enrollments are on the next page. I did mention that Coombs has 446, Quasnet 508, the middle school 274, the high school 432, for a total of 1,660 students. We're back matching our October number there.
All right. Any other questions on that?
Next on the list in, on the agenda is free tuition for non-resident children of staff, and this came up because we actually had a staff member raise the question, and through Attorney Toomey's office and through an attorney at DESI, the attorney at DESI confirmed that districts are permitted to offer employees a benefit of free tuition for their non-resident children regardless of whether or not the district participates in school choice. These, the only thing that I understood was these children could not take a school choice spot if there is a school choice student wanting that spot, or if we had five openings and we had five choice students, and then we have an additional staff member's child would have to come as a tuition waiver. But they are allowed to come and there is not a charge. That was just an update.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, do we need that clarified in the policy manual for future school committees to be aware of? I mean, is that something we should, I mean, in the past, we have had staff members come to the board and ask for a waiver, is what I think we've done in the past, and I just want to make sure that, I think that's a great idea, and I think it's, I don't know what the board thinks about trying to put into paper on that.
Well, I mean, they're telling us that that's basically-
State law.
-law, right?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that, I guess it's up to the committee if we want to codify the law into our policy.
Is that something new? Was that recent? Because I remember-
Yeah.
-four or five years ago, we were taking, staff members would actually come to the board and ask for a waiver.
Yeah, well, this Department of Education sort of, I don't know if it's a memo, it's dated in 2002, so it's been an understanding or, for quite a while. It does cite or attach to it as Mass. General Law 76, Section 12, "Any child with the consent of the school committee of the town where he resides may attend at the expense of said town," which we kind of already have talked about with people that have come before you. I think it's just, and maybe you do want it somewhere written down where there is sort of, it's viewed as a benefit for staff members who work here if they choose to bring their children to this district?
Well, I kind of look at it a different way, is that, is that we're not giving special or preferential treatment, so that everyone knows that we're not just giving away free seats here. You know, sorry to phrase it so bluntly, but I, I just think that some people might say, "Why are they coming to the school?" Because they don't know the law, you know?
Well, DESI does refer to it as the offering employees a benefit.
Interesting.
Yeah. But it would not, we would not want to, this, a staff member's child wouldn't, should not cause a school choice student not to get into a slot, because then that is preferential treatment.
Without trying to make more work for the policy subcommittee. As a member thereof-
I'd be fine.
Yeah, exactly. I, I do, I do agree that, I mean, especially with the caveats for the school choice, it needs to be codified in the policy man. I mean, somebody should know exactly how they stand if they're a, you know, employee of the district, and know if they can have their child come here or not, I think. I know we've, we have a tentative date anyway, so we might as well add something else to the-
To the agenda.
To the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely doesn't hurt. It does make me want to go back and look at our contracts to see whether or not it's codified in the contracts.
I don't believe it is.
And maybe that might be something-
Could be put in there.
Something to think about as we go through that, so maybe that's a takeaway from the negotiation-
It is.
Too.
And that's a tangible benefit.
Yeah.
With a price tag on it, so.
And we also have enough to do.
No, you don't.
Sharing the love here. All right.
Okay. So we will-
So do we, do we know how many we have right now?
Of, oh, staff members who would like to bring their children?
Yeah.
I'm only aware of one.
Just one? Okay.
There's a couple more.
Maybe a couple more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Am I not thinking of yours?
Um, no, but I know of another staff member in the, in the town, not, not the one that we were talking about, but I know of another staff member that asked questions in regards to their younger children that aren't quite school-aged.
Okay. So, a small handful.
Yes.
Next up is a little update on Camp Falcon. This was the flyers that went home for everyone that's currently second through sixth grade. This is our planned free summer learning opportunity for these students. It does not matter whether you receive extended school year services through special ed, or whether you're just a struggling student, or you're a high-achieving student. We have, where's my little notes on this, 17? We have 14 activities offered. We've set it up in two-hour blocks, and they're both offered, so you can, you won't sort of miss out if you need to do something from eight to 10 or 10 to 12. We have posted information on the website that includes the forms that went home, and we also did an email message today to all the families of second through six with the attachment. So, parents of second through sixth graders, you should have, you have availability in three different ways to make sure you have your forms. There was a question about when our camp ends at noon, would kids be able to get over to the Coombs School for the rec department camp in the afternoon? And yes, we would make sure that that happened. And so the, the opportunities for students, it's three days a week, and it starts the week of July 19th, and it runs for five weeks, but you don't have to go all of the five weeks, whatever works best for your family. So we're hopeful that by April 13th, anyone who is interested will have returned their packets so that we can plan forward, and we're hoping to have a wonderful turnout.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think there's an obvious answer here, but I just want to ask you, you can pick and choose, you don't have to go the entire block of every day. You know, you can say, "I want to do this, do math," or "I just want to do guitar," or something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They have guitar.
Yeah.
Well, ukulele, you could do that, too.
All right. And then, yes, that's right. And then, school choice students that are approved are eligible, too. And then, what about the students that, for example, we may approve tuition waivers for, for a few students tonight? And my question is, you know, usually, when we have a tuition waiver, we grant it for the existing school year. Now, are those students eligible to go to summer school? And what if they intend to go to Falmouth or Borneo Sandwich after that, or Arizona? I don't know.
The, the waivers that you have granted are only good through the end of this school year, and all of those, and there have been, I wrote this down, nine so far that we, well, including tonight's, if you approve those. They have to apply for school choice if it's their intent to stay. I know that, like, for example, the four that are asking for tonight do not intend to return, they just want to finish out the school year. But they would have to go into the school choice window in June, or the second window, and apply for a spot and hopefully get one. We'll make sure anyone who's been given this waiver knows about that, so they don't fall through the cracks. So if they are approved for school choice, they would stay and could participate in the summer program if they have, you know, by June 17th, the last day of school, some of these students will be basically no longer Mashpee students.
Yeah, so if they, the last day of school and they have not, you can't fill out a form yet for the following year, right? Until sometime in June. But they, but if they hit that first deadline, they can attend the Falcon Summer Program. Is that all right?
If they're, you mean if they're going to put their school choice-
Yes.
-application in, in the first window? Yes.
Yes.
If their intent is to stay and we know that there's slots, we would not want to exclude them from summer.
Sure.
All right. Okay. Any other questions?
I do have a question. I didn't get a chance to read the, the full thing yet today, but how does this, and I'm not going to call it a summer school like I have a million times and may correct it, but the summer program for the students with regression, how does this correlate to that? Is it, is it scheduled different times? Is it?
Well, so if you, if you look at whatever it is, I on this front cover, oh, you don't have this. So we have special ed extended school year per an IEP, and we have two groupings, grades three and four, or five, six, seven. There's an eight to 10, one of those, and there's a 10 to 12. So making sure that the special ed liaison and the parents, if it's in their IEP that they have extended school year services, they will be in one of those blocks, and then their other two hours, they get to pick something else.
Okay.
So we're making it work. And they, and you don't have this, but in the fifth week, the summer school extended school year program only runs for four weeks for the bulk of the kids. So you'll notice in the fifth week that that extended school year block is not available to pick, but those kids can still come for a fifth week and just pick other, other activities.
Oh, good.
You know, they could pick two instead of just one.
I guess that activates-
Thanks.
One more question. I didn't mean to-
No, good, thanks.
Is there a stipend and, you know, for the staff that will be involved in this? And then, do we know the amount of staff members that are planning to be involved?
Didn't bring the folder, but there is a, a staff member for each of these activities, and then there is a, a separate group of staff members that would be under the special ed grant that funds the special ed portion of this. The teachers in, in the packet that they received of, if they were applying to be part of this, there's a little planning time in the week of July 12th. Teachers can plan and set up their classrooms, and there's an extra week, I mean, extra hour each week for them to do any related paperwork or connecting with parents. So we did an estimate of the number of hours. I believe the, the pay rate, which is leaving my brain right now, is it $40 an hour?
For a teacher?
For a teacher, $40 an hour. So a teacher estimated if they did all of this is about $3,000 for them.
So we, we don't have to write that into the contract? We just go ahead and do that?
Well, we are following the same hourly rate that was agreed upon for special ed teachers, so it's, it's outside the contract, but teachers will get a letter and, and you know, we're trying to be very fair and, and make it attractive to them as well as, you know, create really great program for the kids.
I guess that, I could go on forever, I guess. But the, the follow-up would be, what if one of the teachers that are involved in this program, say, have bereavement or become ill or something like that? Is there backup? Is there substitutes, that kind of thing?
That has come up, and we will make sure that we've arranged. In some cases, there might be a day that a teacher already had a commitment, so we have said to them, "Please arrange for a colleague," and that that colleague would be paid for that day. So we'll make sure it's all laid out before, well before the start of this, so we know exactly what happens. In a case of bereavement, we would have to, to approach another teacher to fill in if a teacher were out for a week. But the teachers will have pre-planned each week's activities, hopefully at the beginning of the summer when we're giving them the three days to do that. So it should be able to be, you know, someone else could step in, I think.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So I always had a list of substitutes because you just never know if someone's going to get sick, freaking here.
Yeah.
But, and the, the other thing I wanted to mention was that we still have another separate special ed program for our students with more severe disabilities that needs for the same amount of time, four hours a day for five, three days a week for five weeks. So they may be able to do a little bit of inclusion, but their program is, is very specialized, so that's a little bit different. But for our other students with other disabilities, typically they, they go for two hours a day, and that, and that's where they can do a little bit of both, which is very nice for them.
Yeah, good.
I mean, this is the first time that we're doing this, so similar to when we did the preschool program, you know, there's going to be a learning curve, and there's going to be tweaking that's going to take place. You know, that, I think, is to be expected anytime we're trying to do something new and different. But I, I think the programs that are outlined here, you know, are definitely a step in the right direction to help continue to foster the learning process for our children.
I, you know, I guess I have another one. How do you, how do you get around the air conditioning issue?
Well, we did, to the best of our abilities, selected the coolest classrooms in this building, where the sun does not hit there in the morning, so that the kids will be gone. So we were strategic, even down what I call the Liberty Wing or the fifth grade, taking the outer rooms, because some of the inner rooms get hotter because they get the sun from the courtyard. So we have tried to pick the rooms along the front of the building, stay cool, there's a little tinge of air conditioning flowing through certain places. So we, we're picking the shadiest places. It will probably be warm, but we'll do our best to see, we'll get fans.
Little courtyard out there would be nice.
If that had a little roof over it, maybe it gets hot in there. Let's work on that. Let's, another shade shelter.
All right. Thank you for that update.
Okay. Next on the list is a little update from the Tech Advisory Group, and Mr. Santos was at that meeting, so he can share if he'd like. The first meeting was March 28th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the library. There were 13 guests, well, 14 if you include me, and then also our, Sean Maroney was there, and Suzie Brooks and Colleen Terrell. Very nice conversation. The, the next meeting seems to be geared towards, well, we had introductions, they talked about the professional development that's been provided, particularly with this year being the one-to-one rollout. the one-to-one rollout. Then the next part of the meeting looked at the draft technology plan, which is still being worked on, it's almost there. And then, a lot of questions came up related to curriculum and program offerings when it comes to technology. So the next meeting, the plan is to look at the curriculum offered for technology-related courses and examine the final draft of the plan. They're hoping to provide some tours of the tech department. Mike Looney, the career and technical pathways department head, is going to attend on our next meeting and share some information about course offerings, and even to look at the course, what do you call that book?
Program of Studies.
Program of Studies, to see that there are pathways for students to take. And it's not just the pathway for the child that wants to end up as a programmer, but a pathway that allows exposure to technology that students will use in other areas, that they may not be going as heavily into technology. So the next focus of the meeting is really around the curriculum that's available for students in learning and applying the technology tools that are available. And the next meeting, just FYI, all are welcome, is Monday, April 25th, from 6:30 to 8, again at the high school. And I don't know if, Mr. Santos, you want to add anything?
Well, there's two things I'll say about it. One, I was, I was impressed at the people that were there. Every single person in that room, if not everyone, at least 90, 95% of them, all had some kind of technology background, and very diverse technology background. It wasn't all just, you know, software people or hardware people. So that impressed me. And the other piece to that was, you know, there's a lot of talk about, you know, how we're going to move forward in the district, which, when all this technology started getting introduced to the district with the Chromebooks and everything else, I know it was very important to know that those tools were going to be used to improve learning and not take over the way learning was being conducted. And I remember, you know, thinking to myself when this first started out, to make sure that, you know, we were very careful about the way these tools are being used, and that we weren't just buying stuff because it was cool. So I think it's awesome that we're taking the initiative to go out and talk to the community and talk to some of these professionals, and really get some solid opinions and some guidance on the best way to use everything that we, that we go out there and spend the money on, because that's extremely important, so.
And there's still, Sean is still planning to come in in May to give us an update, or?
In May is when the technology plan will be presented to the school committee.
Cool.
And I just want to add that, I think the district has been pretty strategic, and it's very, and the community for supporting us in having in-house expertise when it comes to the professional development that's provided to teachers. It's been a wide variety, and it's not just through the instructional directors of Suzie and Colleen, but the teachers themselves that have one little tidbit of something fascinating or something very effective, and then they're able to share that with colleagues, and so it sort of grows like that. But the emphasis, too, for teachers is that these Chromebooks are a tool, they're not expected to be used 24/7 in a classroom, it's no different than a textbook, we don't expect those to be open all the time. So there, we want to see them being used strategically to enhance learning, not just to use them because they're sitting there. So most of the teacher, whenever I see them used in the classroom, they are being very well-used. Yeah.
Thank you. Next item is new business tuition waivers.
So we have a student who's currently in the second grade at the Coombs School, and their parent is requesting that she be allowed to stay through the end of this school year. That would be DC.
Okay. Do I have a motion regarding that?
Motion to approve tuition waiver for second grader DC for the remainder of the 2016 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Scott?
Hi. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The other request is one family. They have a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a third grader, and they have moved to Barnstable, but they're requesting that their children remain at the Quaschmidt School until the end of this school year, and to waive the tuition.
Okay. You have a motion?
I move to waive the tuition for sixth grader WE, fourth grader NE, third grader ME for the remainder of the school year. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Scott?
Hi.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. So, next? Next item is the FY17 calendar.
I move to approve the FY17 calendar. Second.
Discussion?
We've made no changes since then.
No, I haven't.
I was trying to study it, and I couldn't find my old one, so it looks the same to me.
It's the same.
Yes.
Okay, if there's no discussion, how do you vote, Scott?
Hi. Yes?
Yes.
And yes. Sounds approved.
Okay.
Next is a subcommittee update on the school start times.
I guess I'll go with that. So we had, our last meeting was March 3rd, March 30th. We had quite a great group of people who participated and helped guide us in our thinking. Outside of sort of a close connection with the district, we had Dr. Peter Edwards, he's a pediatrician, I think. And then we also had Amy Harris as a guest, and she had reached out in between that meeting and the previous one, when apparently she had heard something on the radio about our committee, and she wanted to share her work in Wilton, Connecticut, where she was part of the legal women voters who took this study upon themselves, and then guided the district to making the choice to move their high school to a later start time. So she had some helpful insights. Some of the next steps that we're doing is we are developing a survey specifically for Mashpee Middle High School students. We are double-checking with the impact of the changing start times on our custodial staff through the Department of Public Works. Ruth Provost from the Boys and Girls Club, as well as Mary Bradbury, were part of the meeting. So any changes that we do also impact them, and monetarily, that can be a strain on both departments, particularly for the Boys and Girls Club. The committee ended up, so we had our survey results, both from staff to review, and we also reviewed those from the parents. Little bit of a problem with the data is we gave so many options, it was difficult to really get a good, draw a good conclusion from that. There were a lot of responses, open-ended responses with input from, from our respondents that we had Gail, Gail Hannan looked at to sort of just come up with some generalizations by school. But at this point, we're just basically at the point where we see positive responses and negative responses by school. Doesn't really give us the detail. But what the committees came to decide was that as a committee, we support the Mashpee Middle High School having a start time of 8:30 and an end time of 3:00 PM. So that's sort of a given goal that we're working towards. Now, what happens with the Quaschmidt, the Coombs School is still up to decide. In an ideal world, we decided we would leave the Cooms and the Quaschmidt School at their normal start time, which would mean we would need another 13 to 16 buses and a 700,000-plus addition to the budget, which I personally could never justify, because if I were given 700,000 more for this budget, I would be putting teachers in place and, and working in a different, different area than, than that. So we've been playing around with whether the Quaschmidt and the Coombs should start at more like a 9:15 or an earlier start. There's a lot of different shifts we can make in the day, not only for what goes on after school, maybe they become before-school activities. When we have staff meetings, those could become before-school instead of after-school. So there's a lot still being looked at. And our next meeting is April 28th at 3:30. By then, we should have, we will have, our responses from our students. We're trying to find, you know, specific questions about whether they have after-school jobs, do they watch students, not students, children, siblings or other children on a regular basis after school, what activities they're involved in, how much time they spend on homework, what time do they go to bed, what time do they fall asleep, and their opinion on start times. And I don't know if I missed anything.
No, I think that was a good recap of what was discussed at the meeting. You know, one other question was, you know, how well utilized are the buses that we currently have? So if we did change the start times, you know, are all 13 to 16 buses utilized fully by the high school? Because obviously, you do have the opportunity for some of the high school kids to be able to drive themselves, and what exactly is that impact? Yeah, but this is where it really gets in, I think, to the nitty-gritty of trying to, you know, and where it will have potentially the most impact from a disruptive perspective of the status quo. You know, if we move forward with changing the high school start time, and then, you know, our resource limitations are going to force us to make a decision one way or the other, potentially, if we want to achieve that objective as far as the impact on the other schools, and how, how do we mitigate that impact? You know? And ultimately weighing the, you know, the benefits and costs of all of that, both on the students and also on the parents. And, you know, it requires changes potentially to the teachers and the faculty and the administration also, so. A lot of moving parts, but I think the committee is doing a good job trying to dig into all of the varying parts, and, you know, now, we're trying to bring some clarity, I think that will make it a little bit easier for them to, to come to some decision or some recommendation.
Just to reiterate, the exploration of changing the school start time is potentially a 17, 18 school year impact.
And, you know, as you probably have read in the newspaper, you know, we're not the only ones that are looking at this. What was it, last week, or maybe it was the week before? There was a thing in the Boston paper, and there's a whole disk, a whole regional group in Massachusetts that are looking at it collectively. You know, and ultimately, something like that, as far as affecting extracurricular activities would be the best, if everybody was moving in the same direction simultaneously. And it's my understanding, even Desi is, is looking at it, too. So, you know, I think we're out ahead of it, and, you know, the research indicates that it does have a, a very positive impact on the high school. And, you know, it was encouraging to hear that, at the meeting, some of the feedback, the lady from Connecticut, who said that she worked on it with her school district, there were naysayers initially, yet a couple years after the change, they, everyone was embracing it, and did not want to move back to the old process, so.
And she said that the naysayers came from the elementary level, so it's the same, there's a lot of unknowns for the elementary parents to figure out. And just moving forward, we will do additional surveys that are a little bit more precisely structured. We are also going to schedule some presentations for parents that will be structured, though, with the PowerPoint presentation and question and answering periods. And then we will schedule some parent coffees as well around this conversation about school start times. So, you know, we're going to do our best to, to have a well-informed community.
I do have one more. I don't know if everyone was, I don't know if Dawn was referring to this or not, but there's a state, Association of School Committees is having a forum tomorrow night. I don't know if anyone can get up there, but this is in Newton, Newton North High School, tomorrow at 5:00 PM, panel discussion on later high school start times. And I assume that it's got Division I, Division II of the state MASC getting together to talk about this, and I think they have some professionals there, you know, some national experts on this subject. Let's see, tomorrow night, I can't go.
Well, tomorrow night's a talent show.
That's right.
I have to go to that.
Well, maybe, you know, I'll keep it on the radar, see what happens.
My guess is, this is not the last time. Do you know what time that is?
George Michael.
Did you say 5 o'clock?
5:00 PM at Newton North High School.
Okay. I'm sure there'll be more opportunities on this subject.
We can also ask them for any materials, I'm sure they'll provide materials after that meeting.
All right. Great work, thank you. Next is, is there any other?
Sorry, I was gonna say, I was just gonna ask if there was any movement or planning for the negotiating subcommittee talking about the interim superintendent plan, or any movement on that, or?
We have not had a negotiation meeting on that. We've been having subcommittee meetings on the union contracts at this point. I was thinking about trying to see if we can get one scheduled to get that moved forward. And I just got some information, Mr. McGee had asked for, from MASC, I just got an email from them late this afternoon that I'll forward to individuals, and Mr. McGee had asked for information in regard to interim superintendents. Mass keeps a list of them, and he wanted to see that list, so I will forward that to everybody. But I just got that, so.
Thanks.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing about, that you had asked at the last meeting on school choice money?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. No, do you want to wait till the next meeting?
Uh... This is just an update?
It's in response to a question that you asked about spending school choice money?
Okay.
We can do it next time.
Well, we can do it back up under unassigned and unfinished business from the prior period. So we'll skip back to that.
Oh, there?
Yes.
Awesome. The question at the last meeting, I think the finance committee meeting, was specific about making sure a school committee sort of had some monitoring or control on school choice money. In reaching out to other districts, and I believe it was the Mass Association of School Committees, there's generally not a policy on that, but there are protocols. And an example being that in NOS, that school committee approval prior to spending school choice money is the protocol, so.
What's the difference between a protocol and a policy?
Spelling?
That's the only piece of information I have to share.
Probably the only thing is the subcommittee doesn't have to meet to develop a policy. Okay. All right, thank you for that update. Any other unassigned or unfinished business? So just to make sure we covered everything.
Yeah, I do have one, I, we do have a...
Quiet, so meaning, yeah.
Been so quiet. I can't help myself. I don't know how many outstanding minutes we have, or executive session minutes we have, but it's always good to get all those minutes approved or in our faces before an election, so that, you know, in case we lose anybody, we don't want to lose anybody. But if in case we lose anybody, that way we have everyone here to vote. So sometimes what happens is you get a turn... to vote. So sometimes what happens is you get a turnover, and now I know we'll still have four here, but what happens is you, after an election, then you have people that want to abstain. And then we have an issue, might have an issue with passing, and they just want to clear the decks, that's all.
No, I think that's a good point. Unfortunately, we don't have another meeting this month, I believe, but-
There is one, though, before the election.
Right. There's at least one, the 4th, I believe it's the 4th of May.
May the 4th?
Yes, May the 4th.
Don't, come on, May the 4th, it's Star Wars Day.
Don't do it.
It's Star Wars Day.
What do you mean Star Wars Day?
May the 4th be good.
Isn't every day a Star Wars Day?
All right.
Yeah. I digress, I'm sorry, Quinn.
Not inviting you back to this.
It's my birthday.
Okay. So we will plan on doing an executive committee meeting prior to that meeting. So we'll plan on, hopefully, 6 o'clock. So hopefully that will work for everybody's calendar. Please check if it doesn't. We'll have to do it at the end of the meeting.
That is the next school committee meeting, is the 4th of May?
Yes.
Is, okay.
Check your calendar.
I will.
Okay. You could do the executive at 6:30 and the May at 7:00.
Yeah, we could do it that way, too. So if 6 o'clock will not work, please let me-
Oh, 6 o'clock is fine.
Oh, okay.
There's no problem with that. I was just wondering, we don't have a second meeting in April, there's no finance committee meeting, is that, was my question?
No, because of the school vacation.
Ah, okay.
So, any other unfinished business or comments? All right. Last item is events and happenings. Everyone has the calendars and the menus in your packet, unless you have any specific questions on those. Hearing none. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
Before that, since there's not going to be another meeting, sneak this in, there is going to be a couple of events happening that would be of interest. First is the in-place site exhibit, which will be happening the last week of April. I believe it's the 27th, 28th, and 29th is when the exhibit will be open. There will be publicity out on that. It is open to anyone in the town of Mashpee. There is probably some sort of a registration procedure in order that the area will not be completely overrun at one point in time and not at another. That will be on the school website, where people can sign up for specific times to come and view and, you know, just go through the in-place site exhibit.
Where will that exhibit be held?
That's a good question.
It'll be at the high school, most likely in the auditorium, set up on the stage area so that there can be some discussions amongst participants, as well as having to be able to go up, go through it, and then exit off the stage, so we can get as many participants through as possible. I had an opportunity to go up with Mr. Schmidt to a training up in Rockland. It's outstanding, and it's great for parents. I think it aligns very well with our current initiative with Gosnell and working with parents in our community. So we're excited for it. There will be publicity going out end of this week, early next week. And we're, again, continuing to attempt to educate our students and families on the science of potential addiction, substance abuse. The more we can do, the better.
All right. And hopefully the enterprise will make sure that that's well-publicized so that we get outstanding attendance.
Don't forget to tell the Cape Cod Times, they like to write about, you know, Mashpee.
We can also make, we can also make sure that through the school messenger system, that an email goes to all families of the right age group, and also whether we use some kind of a Google signup form so parents could pick a time, if that, that would be helpful. So we'll have it that way as well, too, so that they get an email.
Yeah. So to Mr. McGee's point, we should not discriminate against, you know, our other newspaper here on the Cape, so we should make sure that they are well-aware of that also, even though they're not in attendance tonight.
Interesting they're not here.
All right. Any, you have something else?
I do have something else. There's also going to be a presentation from, the Recovery High School is going to be making a presentation to the 7th and 8th graders coming up, I believe it's the 26th of this month, at 10, or?
We're waiting on a response for them for a specific time, but it'll be on the 26th.
It'll be on the 26th. If any members of the committee are available, or anybody's available to attend, that would be an excellent presentation. There's a group of three or four high school students who will give their stories in terms of becoming addicted and getting clean and what their life is like now.
I'll send all information up to members of the committee, Mr. Chairman, prior to that happening, so you're fully aware of the specific time.
Is that most likely during the day, or?
Correct, during the school day.
During the school day, okay.
Sick thing. I'm done.
Anyone else, dare I ask?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott?
Hi. Yes.
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 See you in May.